...
Walter.
How are you? Good to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, great. Good evening, I'm Walt Baker with DSP Engineers. With me tonight is Richard Batiste, sitting in the center over here. He's with Forest Creek Equity, the contract been D for the project. As the board is aware, this property is zoned R2 right now. And we presented it to the town board, and town board suggested that we go to the planning board for review and recommendation to change the zoning from R2 to R3. As the board can look at the code and see what the difference is between the R2 and R3, the major difference is the lot size. The R2 zoning code calls for 28,000 square foot lots, and the R3 calls for 22,000 square foot lots. The minimum lot width is still required to be 100 feet wide for R2 and R3, which in turn makes the depth of the lot 220 deep for R3 versus 280. So with the proposal that we're looking at, go from R2 to R3, the maps I presented to the board was a conventional R2 map with 79 lots. And we also presented an R3 conventional lot plan, which has 79 lots. The map that I've got posted here on the board is the R3 zoning layout for the conventional. And what it does is give us a little variance in, with the lot depth not being that extra 60 feet, we were able to make some of the lots 220, which is the code. And some of the lots, we were able, because of the depth of the property from east to west, we were able to make the lots that are along the, where the tree line is to the east, there's a, it's an open field major, open field. And then there's a tree line to the east, and that easterly tree line, we tried to preserve that by making the lots that back up to that 330 feet deep. So we're trying to be sensitive to the trees that are there on the property, as well as to the little variance in the lot width. By going with the plan that we've got, we were able to make some of the lots even wider than 100 feet wide, to give us a little variance in case some of the prospective buyers want three-car garages, and that makes it a little easier having a lot that's 110 feet or 120 feet wide. We do have a cul-de-sac, the conventional lot still had a cul-de-sac. For the R2, with the R3, we're able to pull that a little bit further to the west, basically, and keeping that tree line behind the cul-de-sac to the east as well. The town board, obviously, just requiring that rezoning, they suggested we go to the planning board for your review and recommendation back to the town board before they make a petition to act on the property.
Well, go back about five, five or six years, I believe, this board, we did send a letter to the town board because that was originally a large lot development.
Correct.
And a large lot, we sent a letter recommending it to be R2, or even we're satisfied the board wasn't prepared, to be even R3 at the time. We based that on the properties across the street. That is in an R2 area, but that was a cluster development.
Correct.
It would have to be the name of the street, but that's a cluster development. That, I think, reduced the size of those lots to 14,400 square feet, if I'm not mistaken on that.
Which is half the size.
There are much smaller lots over there that were being proposed here, under the R3. So if the board is okay with that, I think our intent was to send recommendations to make it R3. With the lot, there are some comments, I mean, I've got a few, um, where there's the belief that the lots, the houses would be close together and stuff. No, they're still 100-foot wide lots. It's, the dependent on the lots are the same width, just as you stated, it's just the depth.
Right, yeah, the R2 zoning is still 110. I mean, if we were to build it...
It's the modern.
And that's our justification plan for the 79 lots. This is what you could build on the site if you were to do the R2 zoning versus what we want to do with R3.
Yeah.
And as you mentioned, the zoning, the major difference is the depth. I mean, it's 60-foot difference. You're going from 220 to 280.
Yeah.
So by doing 220, it gives us flexibility on some of the other lots, and in turn it also helps us with the width, so we got some lots that are in excess of 200.
We did have a request, another applicant, this is back a few years ago, they wanted to use this, you guys remember this development? They wanted to make it a cluster development, remember that?
Yeah.
And we looked at it and said, you know, went over and actually walked the site and said, you can't make this a cluster development, there's no natural features to be preserved. And that's what we told the wall store.
Correct.
Moving that, it's, you know, you try for R3 development, standard R3 development, you know, by 220, that would work, but if you try and put a cluster, there's nothing there to say, nothing would go that says you're allowed to do it at that particular extent.
Right, generally when you do a cluster, you can't get any more than you could with a conventional plan.
Right, you're saying, you know, you're preserving some natural features.
Right, preserve natural features.
It's a farm field, you know?
Correct.
That was, that was the reason. So as far as the R3, if the board is okay, I mean, we sent a letter referring to the town board to consider moving it from R2 to R3, I guess that's what we're hoping to do. I know there are some neighbors that have concerns and stuff here, is there, are you folks...
Yeah, we've got concerns. I've got a concern about it.
I'm sorry?
I have a concern, okay? I have a concern about the...
Hold on, hold on, I don't, you gotta...
I'm sorry?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We'll, we'll let you come up and speak, okay? Just give us your name and...
My name's Ed Steny.
You gotta go to the microphone.
Go to the microphone.
Okay. Just come up, give us your name and address, and you can express your concern.
My name's Ed Steny. Okay, I live on the corner of Greensboro and Salt Road, all right? I moved into Webster in 1985. We got a slogan, in fact, there it is, right there, "Life is worth living." Yet I watched the town allow building to go uncontrolled.
Really?
Is anyone, yes, have you looked at the 79 homes?
Jeez, I feel something else is happening here.
Sir, I don't care, I'm talking now.
Go ahead.
Never let you talk, how about that?
You're gonna let me talk?
The 79 homes, okay? Every home is gonna have at least two cars in it because it's out there. What about the increased traffic in that area? He's talking maybe three-car garage, aren't you right before? Okay? It's lowering the value of my home. I didn't buy there to live in Greece. I could have bought a house cheaper in Greece and lived there. All right? This is not right. It is not right that that many homes are being packed into that area. Okay? Why bother with zoning? It's zoned as R2. It was already brought down to large lots, which unfortunately, I didn't know about. Most of the people didn't even know about this meeting tonight or what was involved here, okay? But no one was happy with that. It's decreasing my value. My taxes are not gonna go down while my property value drops, and it changes what I bought. It changes the value of what I bought. I have no problem with an owner of, you know, going in there, building on, building on the property, but building responsibly. I mean, I look now and see, this is not gonna be much different than what they're building now down at the golf course there. Where in the lawn, if you don't have sugar, you can just yell out the wind, and the next door neighbor will pass it to you. Is this really what we want to be doing in Webster? Is this the Webster we want? I don't think so. I don't think that's why people are living up in that area. I don't think this is right. Now I realize this is probably gonna happen, and I realize what I'm saying here probably doesn't make a difference. But I'm telling you, it's not right. We're changing the, when I moved here, we didn't even have a shoe store in Webster. And yet, in every place I look, we're building, building, building. We build those homes there, the schools are already at capacity. I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. I can't afford to raise the school taxes to build another building. I think there's a bigger picture here than just, well, can we fit them in here, can we put the frontage here, or this way or that way? It's a matter of the quality of life. And I think that's something that's worth preserving or at least saving.
See, but what happens, here's, let's go back, first of all, I don't like when I hear things like, we're basically throwing the town away. That isn't so. There's restrictions in the town, and if, let me finish.
I'm not gonna say, are you getting my shot? Go ahead.
So when somebody comes in and they meet the requirements to build, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, if they meet the requirements of the town code, they can do it. This one here meets the requirements for homes, it's residential area. Now, it was a large lot. The owners of the property used to farm it way back when. Well, after a while, mom, pop decide they wanna sell the property. You worked at a factory who works here and there, whatever, get a pension. Mom, pop, their pension is that piece of property.
You're right.
Agreement?
Yeah, no, I know the law.
So when they sell that property, the only way they can sell that property is to make it usable. Well, large lot, there is no request for a large lot development, three-acre parcels. Now, when sewers became available in an area, then the town board could change that back to, you know, standard-sized lots. Now, across the street from there, that, like I was saying before, that's zoned, that's zoned R2 in there also, but it's a cluster development, so they made the smaller lots. This is standard, they're gonna be stand, let me finish. These are standard 100-foot lots. Whether he does this in R, whether he does this in an R2 or an R3, is basically the same number, like, it was just a matter of a few lots difference. We'll get this one, see what's...
I'll hold you right there.
There's your phone.
All right, I'll see what's in the works. Good evening, this is the town planning board?
Yes, good evening, how are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, I'm calling in regards to the portion of the town meeting that's going on right now.
Okay.
Um, I have some questions. I'm blocking, I've got it turned down now, so I'm not hearing the answer that's going back and forth, but I just heard the gentleman that took the podium very concerned about the overbuilding in the area. I'm a drive-away across the street, and I don't know if you need my name and my AF number, or if I can give you the number.
That would be good, you have to direct it then, yes.
Sure, you tell me, you tell me where you're at.
Go ahead.
The name is Mark Anbani.
Mark Anbani.
De-P, Mark Anbani.
Okay.
The last name is DePaulis, D-E-P-A-O-L-I-S.
Okay.
And we reside at 237 Salt Road, which is directly across the street from this.
All right, can I just hold you there a second? Let the gentleman inside, and finish speaking, and I'll get right out with you, okay? Okay, thanks, okay, I'm sorry.
When that cluster was built, the one that you just referred to, okay? I came to the town board meeting for that one, okay? And you're all different faces now, I don't see anyone here who's at that meeting. But we were told certain things about that development. We were told, for example, they were gonna put a trail in there. So the builder went out, I mean, it was Garber Homes, they dumped down some wood chips, called it a trail. Now it's 2021, where's that trail? We were told, yeah, there's gonna be a trail there, you know? We're gonna set it up, so it's in keeping with the area. This is why it's hard for me to trust anything that goes on, because when I went here, in fact, the fellow who told me that was actually a good friend of mine at the time, the owner of the Ambers. And, oh yeah, you know, we're gonna do it, you know, it's gonna be nice and...
Okay, we get into the point.
But anyway, the thing is, I understand what you're saying, but what are we gonna do now? Are we gonna widen Salt Road? What about the sewers? Do we have the capacity?
Yes.
To handle it?
Yeah.
How come, how come years ago, they couldn't hook up the other one because I was told that we didn't have the capacity at the sewage treatment plant?
That's all been changed.
Everything's been changed now?
Yes, they abandoned under the sewer plant and everything, I don't wanna get into all the technical stuff.
Okay, well, I've got a concern, but again, the traffic, the traffic, the increased traffic is a concern to me. I'll tell you, it's kinda nice this past summer when that bridge was down. Now, the bridge is up, it's like a racetrack. Okay, fine, again, we're gonna put it in. 79 80 homes there.
But again, unfortunately, it meets the requirements for development, and that's what we have to deal with. You know, my wife was big on this, she was born and raised here, her name was Clem, Clem Road, I used to be a family sprout.
I know, yeah.
About all that said and done, it's history.
Yeah.
But I come home from a planning board meeting, catch hell, it's like, what are you guys approving? You're approving this, you're approving that, so I gotta plug my ears, because we're doing what we have to do, not what we feel like doing. So it's, it's an issue, but we can't stop it. If they meet the requirements, we have to go with it. Simple as that. I understand your family.
Maybe there's a town that we need to look at what it is we're doing.
The only other way to do it is people buying property, the town, this town owns more property than any other town in Monroe County, that they have purchased for open space.
You mentioned the previous owner, right? I happen to know him, okay? Lived across the street, going for him and his wife for a long time.
All right, look, we've gotta keep moving.
But what, I'm gonna say, just one second, one second, please.
Go ahead.
When he lived there, he told me several times, he wouldn't sell that property as long as he lived there, because he didn't wanna see this going on. Now he's gone, and I can understand the pension thing, you know, you got pensioned, you got that. But now it's okay, so he doesn't have a problem with it now, but had a problem with it then. I don't know. He didn't want, he never, if he was still living there, this would never be happening, because he would solve the problem.
Well, but that's the change in situations. You're right, we agree with you, but it's beyond our control. We can't say, no, we don't want any houses, and we can't tell this gentleman, no, you can't build.
I'm not saying don't build houses, I never said that. I said, maybe, maybe not 79 houses. Maybe not 79 houses.
All right, well, appreciate it, thanks, thank you. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. Hello?
Hello?
There, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right, um, well, I'm kind of in agreement with the gentleman that just left the podium, however, I, I do realize, like he said, the building's probably gonna go on. I had a couple of concerns, number one, being directly across the street from that development. We never heard anything about this happening. I, I watch the board meeting schedules pretty regularly, and I found out on April 29th, this was on tonight's document, or March 29th, this was on tonight's document. Is the town not like practicing to notify people with 100, within 100 feet of a proposed project any longer?
When a development comes in, this is nothing more, this is nothing more than a review tonight and a recommendation, so there's, excuse me, there's no vote on this tonight, so no, there won't be a notification. But when it comes, when it comes back, it'll be in, it'll be published, this is just a recommendation to the town board to consider the rezoning, set a date for, and so on and so forth. When it ultimately were to come back here, gets that far, if it comes back here, then that definitely would be published, and you will be notified by that too, yes.
Okay, and at that point, will be the time we have concerns about the design of the development, uh, landscaping, such.
Absolutely.
That will be the time to approach it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I appreciate your thought on that, that's a good point, yes, you're absolutely right.
All right, well, I'm, I'm there. We do have one part of the question, and that is go back to what you talked about, people who worked the property had the right to sell the property, therefore the people who wanna buy the property had the right to sell it accordingly to build. And we appreciate that, understand that. But at, but at that point, just like this gentleman said, or a second, 79 homes, if a person had been left at large lots, would somebody or would somebody have locked the property at the price of the property being right? My question is, when, when is this, when does what these people want for this farmland really become acceptable?
See, the large lot is, is, you know, three-acre parcels, that's because stores weren't available, as I mentioned before.
I understand.
But now you get to the point where the cost of the development and stuff, that land, it wouldn't be purchased. All you're impacting then is the owners of the property, because nobody can afford that. Unless somebody, unless they said, someone buy a piece off for my son, my daughter, my cousin, my nephew, whatever, you know, in parcels, that'd be the only way they could do it. And that would be no repair of the property, and that would be poor plan, because now you can't even lay the plan out the way you'd wanna see, a completed plan with the road and so on, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I guess I understand that, but I guess I also understand that the more people that have to pay the buying price or the purchase price for the property, just all we can point to, to more homes. And I understand the gentleman said, inasmuch as if these people bought that property, that at a lesser cost, would they have gotten away with putting 40 some homes on or 50 some homes instead of this? I just wanted you to understand my, my...
Yeah, I understand. They're good points, legitimate points.
So now tonight, go either yay or nay this, and then we'll be over.
We will, we will yay or nay, we'll just make a decision whether we let, if the board is acceptable to sending a recommendation to the Webster Town Board to review this and consider the rezoning of it to an R3 versus the R2. It not be any cluster development or anything of that nature, it would be just a simple R3 development. And that, that, that is up to the town board, they'll put it on their agenda. Once they have it on their agenda, then it's up to them to set a hearing date, that would be a public hearing, would come and voice in a comment at that point. And from there, if, if they ultimately approve it, then it comes back to us. If they disapprove it, then it's, that is close, the way it is, it stays.
Right, right, so we will be notified for the hearing?
Yes, absolutely. If you're within, you're within 300 feet, you said, right?
Oh, yeah, I have the right of...
Yeah, then you'd be, you'd be there, correct.
All right, well, thank you for your, taking my call.
Oh, thanks for the information, thank you, have a good one.
All right, good night.
Bye-bye. Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Sure, come on out. Yo, how's the telephone working?
All right, my name is Dean Lucas, and I live at 290 Salt Road, so I'm literally the border of this property, literally right next door.
Just to drive this one out a second, can you see this?
I think I might have hit it. Was it short?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, so, I, I guess the question, when did it go from big lot to where we are now, trying to go to R3? Like, when did that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking it's about six years ago or so, right Josh? 2018. 18? Also, it's a few years then.
Yeah, so when Bob sold, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
When Bob sold, and how come, being like literally right next door to this field, how come we didn't know about that? How come I wasn't given notice that they were gonna be changing it?
Back then?
Yeah.
Or I had no idea, I mean, you, it, it definitely had to, legally had to be published in the newspaper? As a public hearing?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, well, it was published.
I don't think there's many getting the newspaper now.
Well, it's on, it's on the town's website also.
Okay, I don't really think so.
So, I mean, if you can't send everybody in town a letter...
Yeah, but you would think like, the middle box, two down from Bob, that I would've gotten a notice. You would think like, literally, if my, if my line is the line of that field, you could see the name on this print, like, why wouldn't I have been given notice, some notice? I'm totally against it, and there, there's a ton of reasons. One, the, just the traffic, like was mentioned by Ed, traffic is absolutely, and right now, it's nice. As soon as the golf course gets like unbelievably populated, like, that's gonna be beautiful. You got Schlegel, you got Phillips, you got all of these, it's building and building and building. What about firehouses?
What about what?
The firehouses.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, there's just so much that is really, and Ed mentioned exactly what I mentioned out in, out in the hallway. Like, my property is gonna drop, price-wise, are you gonna drop my taxes? I'm believing you're probably gonna shake your head no. You're not dropping my taxes.
You won't drop your taxes.
No, of course not.
Of course not, no, they didn't invite...
But you know that my property will, will definitely drop down.
But the other side, it isn't gonna decrease the value of your property.
Oh, no, definitely, without even one tiny doubt, it will definitely. It, it dropped in my mind, and I own it.
Well, that, if you're talking in terms of having open space there, where somebody were to come to buy your house, say, oh, you got a nice house, wow, look at this open field.
I got 12 acres, so I still have open space, but coming right up next to me, I don't have open space. So I'm gonna hear noise, I'm gonna have lights, I'm gonna have like young kids like doing all kinds of crazy stuff, just exactly like, you don't want it, your house, I don't want it, my house. I was never given notice that you were changing from large lots to R2.
Yeah, that was done, that was, well, whatever, three years ago.
Yeah, 2018, yeah, three years ago.
I don't know, I'm gonna have to assume somewhere notices, I mean, it was, our meeting, when it did come back, you know, it was all published, you know?
Yes, it was published on a website, and I don't know if it was published in...
There's a legal process for publishing it, and that has, that's followed with everything. Tonight's meeting, right now, we have, I think, like four, the, three or four of the items on here, were public hearings, and every one of them is, is in a published, you know, published.
The only reason that, the only reason I know about it is because my neighbor and my wife have been searching and searching to see when this was gonna happen, because we see, you know, we knew that the lot was for sale. Like, I tried to offer Bob to buy just a swath, so that this didn't happen, and Bob didn't sell it.
Yeah.
And it's obviously based on money, but I just, I'm, I'm really concerned, Ed mentioned it, it's like we're living in Greece, or, or I've moved to Henrietta. Webster has turned into where I wouldn't have bought. If I didn't have the land and the barn and the storage, I would definitely not live where I'm living. I wouldn't live in Webster.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, but...
And do you go to, so you can go down Bridge Road on Saturday? Because you feel the same way?
I, I've, I've been here my whole life.
Bridge Road, and, and...
And I understand what you're saying.
And whole road, same thing, you gotta feel the same way.
I, I traveled Bay Road a lot, and I remember Bay Road when I was a kid, you know, 494, you'd go up the hill, you went up sideways, because there were no gutters, the road was like this, with the big lane going up.
That was the day.
And that was, that was Bay Road. Now, it's like a major highway, I can't even get out onto the highway, onto the road, with traffic sometimes. I understand what you're saying.
Yes, it's a shame, and as far as the Clem's go, you said your wife is a Clem?
Yeah.
I think my, my son actually lives in one of the, on 250, one of the original Clem houses, his main cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my son. It's just unfortunate. Oh, yeah, and actually, my son works for Tom Clem, too.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Road. Is it? Yeah. Tom is a great man, it's a great family. I just am very disappointed in all of this, and I'm incredibly disappointed in that.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, but you know, we just, understand what we have to do, that's all I can say right now.
I do, I've built my whole life.
We feel the same way as you do in a lot of cases.
I just am just totally, family, 50, my other gasket, that I didn't know when it went from our...
That's a problem.
And Bob, Bob members had no...
This, I, I don't know, I don't know why or what the circumstances were, but anything here forward, you definitely will be notified. This, this, like I told the other gentleman, there's, there is no, there's no public hearing in this thing, this is just a discussion.
I do, I do understand, because I've been in the building trades my whole life, so I do understand what this is. But I, what I don't understand is why I didn't know before.
I don't know, I can't answer that.
I know, I wish you could.
I can't. Alls I can say is that I'm sure it was published, it had been published.
I'm sure it was published in the DNC, which I don't even know, like, I don't know.
Webster Herald, the Webster Herald.
Okay.
No, we're trying to buy carpet and everything else.
All public notices are published ahead of time.
Yeah.
Upcoming meetings. And if you're within three hundred feet, you'll be notified. The town is working on it.
I'm within one foot. I'm literally, if.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand.
Show him.
Now, he knows, he knows. Literally, my property line is right on the edge.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
This is my country.
Why, why wouldn't we be notified the first time?
That's, he says he doesn't know, it was in the Webster Herald.
But you're saying that we're going to be notified the next time? But how can we trust that if we weren't notified the first time?
It would seem like.
I don't want to keep this thing going back and forth.
Now, we do know.
But.
We do know, that's the point. He's making the point. That's why I'm here as well. So a lot of beer.
Alright, will you?
It should have been.
This is a public plan, bro.
I don't want to cause like a big thing.
Then why the fuck am I here?
This is, first of all, first of all, it is not a public hearing.
That's my message.
Number two, you will come up, you get a chance to go up and speak, but I can only hear one at a time. I can't hear Sheldon from out there, that's all.
I understand, I'm not trying to get an uproar, that's, that's not my personality. I'm trying to do this, but I just, literally, it blows my mind that I wouldn't have had, like, there should have been something, you know, like, if we're building an addition, where it's, we have to have like a variance?
Yep.
There's a sign.
Yep.
A sign there that says there's a variance, and then I can find out when that means. So literally, I live right there.
I'm fully agree with you.
It's not the same as a variance.
And because of what you're saying, that's something that they're working on right now, going back to that, because just contacting with letters, there's always somebody that doesn't get on that mailing list and says, "Well, I never," just like what you're saying, "I never was notified." If there's a sign on the property, to me, that's always been the best communication.
Agreed.
And the town is working on that right now, so you may even see a sign on that.
It's late for me, it's late. Because big lot, big lots would have been, that would have been the answer. Because we can handle that many less than seventy-nine.
Late for any comments back, no, you have to.
Yeah.
Probably just want to be notified.
Because it's already, it's already done. We're not a big lot property, we're nowhere, R2 looking to go to 3. So it's, it's waiting. Whoever's failure it was, somebody needs it like, a good swift kick.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, sorry about that. Thanks. Alright, anyone else wish to comment? Do you want to comment on something? Let me get this. Evening, it's the Webster Planing Board.
Oh, yes, I have a comment that I want to share with the planning board group.
Sure, go ahead. Why don't you just give us your name and address, okay?
Sure, this is Cheryl Aiden. And 215 Salt Road.
So you got your radio out of the back. Let's turn the TV down. Go ahead.
He's got to turn the TV off.
Yeah, you got to turn your radio off, because we're getting all that feedback.
Okay, do it.
There you go.
Perfect. So I was across the street, and so, from this site, because the water from the land on the east side of Salt Road drains into my property on the west side of the street. So I need to understand the drainage plan, and what these developers plan to do from that perspective, better than any more water coming out my side of the street, from that land.
Okay, Cheryl, you know what? This, this, tonight is just a recommendation for the zoning of it, but they did present some sketch drawings of what they're proposing. And they do show the ponds, which are right by the road, which is the lower side, you know, towards the road. And to answer your question just quickly, those ponds will collect all the water from that side, so the water flowing out will be less than what's flowing out of there now. And this is before anything has been, this is how the system works. Your water intake that you're getting now should ultimately be much less. And that's the reason for the retention of ponds on the property.
Okay, perfect. So this, I just wanted to bring that as a concern as going forward.
Sure.
And, and if I can second the concern of the traffic with my neighbors.
We all agree with that.
So, we didn't, we didn't, we are family, Bob's down here as well, and down with property, so we are certainly not interested in, but the owners are using, trying to have a.
That's true. Okay, thank you, Cheryl. And there'll be more of that when it comes in, any process that goes through, you know, during any approvals, there'll be more of that.
Okay, so when is, when is the next meeting for?
Oh, I have no idea. This is, this is, again, tonight is just a referral to the town board. Then they have to set a public hearing date to make a decision what they're going to do, and then we base our next meeting with them on whatever happened with the town board.
Okay, all right, well, those days, uh, in two times and.
It'll be a couple of months anyways, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for calling.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, man. Alright. This is easy as wood. Alright, yes, sir. Um, I just, give us your name and address.
Mike Barker.
Mike, okay.
Yep, and I live, you know, 263 Salt Road, just like right across the street, right next to, uh, I had, uh, it's a little, uh, north, just north. I bought that property primarily because, you know, it's farmland there, it was, and I asked a few of the neighbors and the owner what they were going to do with it, and he's like, "We're not going to sell, it's not going to..." You know, same story, and that's, that's all gone inside, and I'm not here for that yet. But yeah, I was, you know, here fourteen, going on fourteen years now. And I, I came from Wayne County where it was a little bit more quiet, and I says, "Man, who knows where I'd have lived up in Webster, so..." My life was mostly. And we, so we bought, and that was, and one of the reasons why we bought that property was because of the property that was, you know, you're looking at, you can still see deer, right?
Sure.
And I understand where you're coming from, too.
But you've seen it all, right?
Yeah.
Get it.
Over and over.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my, my question wasn't to that, when you said way back then, when 2018, I guess way back then for, it's a different, different meaning for everybody, but, are you, so my question, because I'm not, I don't do this all the time, right? Um, is, do you guys send out, like, if you're within that three hundred feet, do you send out flyers, whatever, to neighbors, you know, or is it just the Webster Herald online?
What's going to, what's going to happen, what's going to happen is, when they go to the town board, or an applicant comes in here, you know, the applicant is required to send for a preliminary hearing, or for a public hearing, he has to send a notice, he comes up to the town, he gets the list from the town hall of everybody that's within three hundred feet of that property, that comes within three hundred feet. He has to send registered letter, I think it's registered, isn't it, Josh? Or is it just a standard letter of mail? I'm sorry?
First-class mail.
First-class mail, okay, I'm sorry. To everybody within that three hundred feet. And once that letter is sent, they've been notified, the closest residents. Then, it's published in the Webster Herald under legal notices, it's a public hearing, and it has.
Right, no, I got that part.
That goes in there, and it's also then published at the town hall and the building board. And it's also published in the, uh, the town or Webster website, so.
Unfortunately, like, and I, and I completely understand all of the first portion of that, right? Where it's registered mail, you know, first-class, you know, like, I, I know personally, I mean, I, I get my mail, right? I, I walk out to mailbox, I know what comes and goes, right? And I know that never came, so, I mean, what first-class mail are you guys using? It's not a question. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but yeah, you know I am.
You mean, like, those stuffs?
Right. Yeah, so, and I'm on that route, right? So I'm wondering why I didn't get.
Oh, for this, for this delay?
No.
Not today.
For, for, oh, you're talking about, I honestly can't say, I don't know.
So that's supposed to be. It's nice to be, I know, so that's what his point is, is my point is, instead of saying the same thing over again, I'm asking a different way, right? So.
Yep, gotcha.
If you were supposed to get a letter, right? Right? Doesn't it seem kind of more logical that we would have gotten a letter? No?
Are you referring to back in 2018?
Yeah, way back in 2018.
None of us got a.
I'm at three hundred feet, I know my property's three hundred feet, I know that, never you see that.
On the board. So if you're saying that we will be notified.
None of us got it, we're like, within a hundred feet. You know, I'm like, right, my house is, so we never got lot there. I mean, you don't, like, I mean, you guys see, this, you're here all the time, you know, you've got the website, I don't check the website, because the guy wasn't going to sell them, right? And then in eighteen, we passed that, it was like, all of a sudden, I knew, you know, it was, when you said it wouldn't be worth it, it all depends on your, who buys the property, right? And what's, what houses, if they're going to put, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses on three acres of property, you're still going to sell that, you're going to make a, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I get your development, I got it. Trust me when I tell you, I'm in construction all my life, okay? But I know for fact, right, that I am supposed to get that letter. And guess what I got? A goose egg.
Yeah.
Why would I have been around 2018 and say, "Uh, I don't think so." And I know for a fact that this place would be packed right now if that were the case. So, you know, how do we go back and say, "We didn't do it right"?
No, there's, I, I don't know what the answer is, I mean, I don't know.
I know, it's easy for you to sit, and it's easy for you to sit there and say that, and you're, you too. I get, and you're about to come at me like, "I don't know what to tell you, get out now, thanks for stopping by," you know, I get it.
No, we're not feeling that way. We, I understand what you're saying, but I, I can't, if I can answer you with something, I'm going to answer it. You may not like what I said, but I still will answer it with this case.
But I just don't, I don't like, I don't know. I couldn't tell my customer, I don't know. I don't know whether I'm going to put air conditioning in your house or not, I can't tell you.
How about a copy of the mailing list? You guys have a list of that, you can pull up and.
See, I don't know what the situation was back then, why you weren't, I really can't. It definitely.
There's got to be a record of the mailing list.
Excuse me?
There's got to be a record of the mailing list.
Would you guys please? We'll let you go.
We're just saying, we're just trying to help out here, because it seems like there's got to be some record, then you can go by.
Would you please stop a minute? If there's some way we can come up with information on it, and we have an answer for it, I have no idea. The only thing I could say is, if they went and dug the records up back in, at that time in the Webster Herald, right? That's the only thing I can think of.
The Webster Herald's fine, I get it, you know, I get.
All the legal documents were filled up, except, you know.
So Webster Herald's not first-class mail, it doesn't come to my house, okay? Right? So I'm talking about the letter that said that, you know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, I have no idea.
He's saying there's got to be a registry of those people that you sent it to, so if we can produce that, and you can say, listen, or, you know, have the mail, the post office ready some force manner that says that you sent it out, then that's what we want to see, I guess.
Can I just, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Because I do the communications for the town. Back in 2018, no, sir, there's no reason.
I'm not.
Let me explain.
Go ahead.
Back in 2018, the agendas were published in Herald and the website. We now added Facebook and Twitter and Town Design.
That's not three hundred foot.
The only, let me explain, please, let me finish. Uh, please. Anytime a letter goes out to you, it is only for a public hearing, and that is only for planning and zoning. If something came to the town board, even if it's a public hearing, there are not letters sent to neighbors. That may be where the issue is, and I will discuss that with the supervisor tomorrow morning, uh, because things are a lot different than how it was in 2018. I have made a lot of changes over the past two years, but we have a long way to go, and I will discuss that with the supervisor in the morning, about doing notices for town board meetings, because right now, letters do not go out to residents for those public hearings, and that may be where the issue is. Okay, so I, I will investigate that tomorrow morning with her.
Thanks, girl. The town board would have to make the decision, change the sign, right? We don't do that. But then if it came, then if it came, if the development, in this case, that's what I was saying before, that this developer, if the town board does change this, and they do proceed to build, then it comes in for a sketch plan review, then it comes in for a preliminary, preliminary is a public hearing, then that's the one that should say, that's where you would be notified, right?
Yes.
Right, when you, when you change the zoning, you don't have to do that?
It's published, okay, we can't.
I, I was just questioning, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
You have to be notified.
I'm not saying that these guys need to want, the developer, that's, this isn't their issue.
You have, you have to be notified, yes, a public hearing, but the public hearing is notified legally in the newspaper, at the town hall, and on the website, would you say Twitter or something also, I guess?
Yeah, Twitter, Facebook.
Well, I don't know. I don't know that.
But you said that where you're, you said that it gets mailed out, correct? Or did you not say?
When there is a proposed project.
Right, right.
And it is on the applicant or the developer to mail out the letters. The town does not mail anything out to anybody, it's on the applicant. What they have to do is they have to come in and sign an affidavit in front of a notary, attesting to the fact that they mailed letters out to the list that we provided. So the town does not do any mailings directly, it's, it's the responsibility of the applicant. I wasn't here in 2018, so I don't know who the applicant was, or what the project that was proposed was, but it would have been on that applicant to send out letters.
Well, if it's not in void, if that didn't happen, then that's.
Just a clarification, just a clarification, I just want to make sure we all understand the same thing.
But I, I don't, I don't, I'm not.
You're saying that when they went from Lodge Lot to R2.
We can't hear you up here, because you left the microphone, I don't even want to jump to the mic.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Hold on, stay there, I'll ask you a question. Go ahead. What's your question? A question.
What? Because I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Now, it was the developer's responsibility to do the mailing, right? And he would have come to you with the list, right? Is that what I heard you say just now?
No, no, no.
It comes to that.
Let me explain, let me talk. Let me explain, let me talk and then you listen.
Okay, I'm gonna listen, I can't, I'm not following.
The applicant comes in for preliminary approval, I'm gonna develop something on this site, okay?
Okay.
So now he wants to develop it. The town administration, engineering department says, here's the criteria, here's what you have to do. The applicant gets the, the listed names of the people that are within three hundred feet. It's up to him then to make a letter of what he's proposing to do, and then mail it to everybody within that three hundred feet. He mails it, not the, not the town, it's not their responsibility.
Okay, I, I got followed. Once they went from large lot to R two.
Yeah.
Would that have happened at that time?
No, no, there were no letters sent for that.
Okay, so he wouldn't even sent a letter?
No, there were no letters sent for that.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I was trying to understand.
But now, but now had somebody come in for a development back then, you know what I mean? Then the letters would've gone up.
I heard it said three different ways, and I had it falling like this, like a ping pong, I didn't understand.
Then it would've been a letter sent.
Thank you for clarifying, I can't really understand that.
Okay. Now, even this, and, and you know, generally, I think we're probably the only towns that even does this right now, this isn't even a public hearing.
He said that, and I was like, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's not even a public hearing. We wanna hear what you need to say, we're interested in knowing if somebody's got interesting information, you know, to bring up, and that's what we do. But again, this is just a review, that's all it is. So we'll see where it goes from here, and.
So back in eighteen, it was, it wasn't, you didn't have to notify, like, notify us.
Not for the town, not for the town board.
When you're changing it from the bigger lots to the class, R two.
So would, would that have been the person who owns the land, that they would've like been an applicant and proposed it be changed from?
She's saying.
You're up.
If the owner of the land at that time, you thought it needed to be.
Sorry, thank you.
Is an obligation.
No, 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 not at all, no.
So it wouldn't have?
I, I, I can't make it any simpler than I just did, man.
Because I don't, yeah, he did say this.
So in two thousand eighteen, the applicant would've been a developer?
You have to give us your name and address, get to the microphone.
Brenda Lucas, two ninety Salt Road.
Okay, go ahead.
So in two thousand eighteen, the applicant would've been the owner of the land or a developer?
No, he was the owner of the land, he had no.
So that's why that's, okay, so that's why we wouldn't have gotten a letter, because it was him rezoning his own property?
You're making this more, you're making this way confusing, I'll tell you. It's, I just explained it clear as a bell, couldn't make it any better. The applicant's gonna sell this property, he wants to get it rezoned, okay? He wants to get it rezoned, he goes to the town, says, I wanna get this rezoned, what they're doing right now.
Well, that, that was my question, it was a developer, it's on them to send a letter, so in two thousand eighteen, it wasn't a developer, it was the landlord.
I'm explaining it to you, yes, the developer is the person who is, who's the builder, let's call him the builder. When he comes in with an actual subdivision to be built, that's when he sends the letters out for the preliminary hearing, that's the public hearing. That's when the letters go out, short of that, there's no letters.
But in two thousand eighteen, it wasn't a developer.
It is, it's the same thing today. There's no, there's no letter going out unless it's a public hearing for a subdivision. This isn't a public hearing.
Is there a?
And that wasn't a public hearing.
A planning board or a board that evaluates like the amount of homes and then estimated number of people that come into that area for like strain on firehouses or like police department schools? There is.
Yeah.
And they, they can validate that there's enough space in our schools right now with all of the developments going on within like block radius?
Everyone is gonna, before, before the applicant comes in, there's a project review committee as well. Okay, I'm not really dragging this meeting out here. Um, a project review committee is all the department has, engineering, the water department, the sewer department, the highway department, our board here, and everybody meets and goes over everything, so the fire marshal is there, everyone is there. Everyone puts their comments in, that's not at this stage, that's when a project, we don't have a project. Those are getting a rezoning, we're asking to change the zone, that's all.
But that is something that would take place.
That is all, at that point, that is all reviewed, yes.
And that would be a public?
No, that's, that's, that's not.
That would just be then evaluated.
That's right, and that is all given to the board members who review it and look at it and say, well, okay, there's somebody, the highway department had a concern about a road, you know, being here or there, and that is, so they change it, so yes, it's all.
Do you guys actually, you do a vote today, or vote to approve it to the board?
All's we're gonna do now is, is if everybody's in agreement, is to just, and, and again, nothing.
But it's, I mean, it's, that's, that's your job right now, is that you guys do a vote to go ahead and approve to do the approval for the board, correct?
Yeah, just, just, we're recommending.
So when you say that it's out of your hands, there's nothing you can do, that's not entirely true.
We just, well, as we're doing.
Because you can vote tonight for approval to the board.
What we did three years ago was send a letter to the town board referring it as an R two or an R three. In their infinite wisdom at the time, they made it R two. I wish they'd have made it the R three back then, had been done with it, but, yeah, I don't like hearing that, but that's the fact.
But that, that's how like the structure works, with like minis and board meetings. I mean, you guys will take a vote, and what you vote on, then it's either no, you don't agree, and you're not gonna send it to the board for approval, or you do agree, and it goes on, correct?
Yeah.
So when you say there's nothing you can do, that's not true. There is something that you can do, because you can vote tonight and not approve it to go further.
It's just a referral to the town board.
Yes, but you have that, that's your vote.
Yeah, I say something, you're saying the other.
It's already R two?
Yes, but they're going to vote.
What he's just telling us right now is R two versus R three.
Yes.
R three, in my opinion, looks drastically better than R two.
But there is a chance that if it doesn't go to R three, they're not going to end up wanting to develop it. Might be, as his words, he said, maybe it might be somebody years down the road, but it might not be them right now.
Well, you don't know that, do you?
No, but that's what we're grasping at, because this is our.
So our function is planning, improper planning, and improper planning, like, like Mr. Mixel just said, you're looking at the best drawing. What would be the best, this one, R two, or the one with the R three drawing, which is underneath? Which one fits better, which one has better drainage system off of it? You know, the detention ponds and stuff, that's the thing you have to look at and consider. And based on that, the R three, like he just said, does make a better proposal.
Well, I would propose neither, and you guys will try to maybe figure something else out.
Okay, thank you. All right, there was a letter sent in by Mr. Feeney, but also, uh, we had some concerns about the road and R two versus the R three, but I think his thinking was the homes were gonna be changed more to govern. In reality, they're still a hundred-foot lots, they're still standard size with lots, there's nothing changes out of that. And, uh, let's see, changing happens down along, changing another thing. I think ninety percent of what he's asking is above the lot sizes, on that. We did get it, and we can keep it for the file. All right, and I guess, is anybody else wishing to speak on this thing?
I just got a quick question.
You gotta miss the microphone.
Okay. Um, real quick, and you don't have to go into any depth, that's all I need, just hopefully, for God's sake, it's quick, not my end too. So, just so, just a yes or no, really, it's all, all right? Like, if this were two thousand eighteen, and we were talking about our lots, R two, right? Was there a chance that, you know, did I miss, did we miss the golden opportunity to come and say, I don't think so?
No.
Okay, so, so it's R two now, but then it was like bigger lots then, did we miss, where did, you know?
Well, that's, it went to the town board based on the letter, you know, to the town board, and then they, they chose to make an R two?
That was it.
Because everything around there was R two at the time, but also, looking back, when you say, okay, it's R two, but you look across the street and, you know, there's cluster development where the lots actually are half the size of what these were proposed to be.
Right.
So. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so. Well, this wasn't a public hearing, but the town board would have cast away. Let's see, so our charge knows, you looked at the two drawings, you can see what they've got, those are two and R three. Uh, the ponds run along the road, those, again, it's, it's only, this is just a sketch plan you're coming in with, just showing us the concept. That area could be landscaped along by the ponds and stuff there, right?
Yes.
Along the road, that makes it an attractive appearance to the, to the project. Our call would be to, do you wanna send a letter to the town board recommending the R three? So that's the question. Mark?
Sir?
Huh? No, I'm saying, we have to make a decision, sending it for an R three to the town board?
I have no objection.
Okay. Derek? Just, I'm just pulling a quick poll.
R three is, kind of, along Salt Road, preserves the wood, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. That's a good point too, preserves the woods in the back, that saves a lot of those trees back in there. David?
There's no difference in impact between R two and R three.
No.
R three is a better, a better layout. I think it functions much better than the R two.
Yeah, I agree, R three is much better.
Derek?
I also agree, R three is better, does the town okay with the cul-de-sac? Let's come up with a pass.
Yeah, there's, they don't like them, really don't like them, but there's, you got the property, there's no way to make. Unless you can come up with something else, I don't think you can look at that pretty, how you did it. Yes, they did. To try eliminate the cul-de-sac. But the way it goes back, there, there's no way to look at a road around. All right, Dave, same thing?
Agree.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we send a letter to the town board recommending that we sell it to R three and this, and this parcel. So I'm gonna, for a second? A second, all of you?
Hi.
Okay, that's it. All right, so all's, all's we did is send a letter recommending it, something to the town board, they may say, oh, we don't want that. Derek? You know, I don't know.
I found an answer for you.
What's that?
I found an answer for you. Uh, the rezoning in twenty eighteen was at the planning board, June fifth, it was not a public hearing, which is why you did not get a notice. Okay, so there was never a public hearing, it wasn't for the planning board in twenty eighteen, and then it went to the town board right afterwards, and that was the public hearing, but town board does not send notices for a public hearing, only planning and zoning, so that's, there's your answer, okay?
Nice job, Derek. She's there. There it is.
Very good.
Yeah. Appreciate it. We weren't aware of any of that.